I would call to order the Westmod Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 13, 2012. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fidesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pill.
Here.
Commissioner Anton. Commissioner Fleet.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here, and Chairman Richard.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. If you would please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, while you're all standing, anybody who's going to give any testimony tonight, either for or against any item, you have to be sworn in. So if you'd raise your hands, it won't hurt. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you.
Phones ready?
Thank you. And I would request that you silence all electronic devices for the duration of the meeting, if you would, please. Thanks, Paul. Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our April 11 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Anton. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet.
Upstayed.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay. The minutes as presented are hereby made a permanent part of the record. Next item is approval of the minutes of our May 9 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet.
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Chairman Richard.
Yes.
All right. The minutes as presented are hereby adopted. First item on the agenda, under Planning and Zoning Item 12016, 224 Willard Place that has been withdrawn from the agenda, will no longer be part of our agenda.
Does that require any action?
No.
No.
Next item. Planning and Zoning Item 12021, Mark Provost, regarding the property located at 823 South Willmet for the following. A zoning code variance request to lot coverage greater than 35 percent maximum allowed in the R3 single-family detached residence district for the purpose of constructing rear yard patios and a driveway. Mr. Provost?
Yes.
Please, if you would, sir, sign in and...
Yes. We purchased this house last August for my son. He suffered a traumatic brain injury in a car versus pedestrian accident about four years ago, and because of that, he has some mobility issues and some other issues linked to the brain injury. The house itself was designed initially back in '91 for a handicapped individual, so for the most part, it is handicap accessible. What we're looking to do is redesign the back patio. Currently, it's a small concrete structure, and what we're looking to do is remove that concrete structure along with some concrete sidewalk along the side that isn't presently used and a probably about 35, 40 percent of the asphalt driveway that's in the front in order to, you know, allow for a larger patio in the back that would give him a flat surface to basically be able to walk and, you know, participate with his son in the backyard. In addition, we're going to remove an existing shed that's in the backyard, fairly oversized, and we're going to return on the west side a swell that we found out when we started going through this process should have been there, and at some point in the past, obviously, had been taken out. That will improve the water flow. And on the north and south side, there exist currently two berms that also kind of prevent the water from running as was originally designed in the subdivision. Right now, it kind of routes everything to the back off of our property line. So, you know, what we feel is even though the percentage of covered property is above the variance, we are reducing that amount, and the changes that we're making are going to make it more permeable and reduce any runoff issues that there might be.
All right. Sir, you said you're going to replace a berm on the west side. I believe you're meeting the east side of your yard, your property.
No, the berm, the berm is on the west end of the property right now.
The west end of the backyard?
The backyard, yeah.
Oh, the west end of the backyard.
Because the backyard's to the east of the house, yes.
Okay. All right, sir, since you are requesting a variance, could you really speak to the hardship that would be imposed on you?
Yes. Right now, even though the house is handicap accessible, the backyard is not. Our original plan was to not only do the patio but recreate the backyard to make it flat. As I mentioned, my son has a brain injury, and he's not able to safely navigate the backyard as it stands right now. By putting, you know, basically, if we're not allowed to do the variance, he can't safely navigate the backyard. You know, he's restricted to the house in the front of the yard, the front of the house on there.
Okay. Before we go to the public, does staff have anything for us?
Yes. The applicant has worked with our planning and engineering staff to request this rear yard patio, and because his lot exceeded the impervious surface requirement by 6 percent, he tried to make a good faith effort to reduce that by asking to take out part of his front driveway and removing a sidewalk and removing the shed, as he mentioned. And the engineering staff feels the improvements to the berms and the decrease in hard surface will not adversely impact the neighbors.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? I'm seeing no one. Hands up. We'll close the public comment. We'll start with Commissioner Thomas, if you would, please.
When you're saying that the berms and that are interfering with the flow of water from one property to the other, as it should be heading towards the retention area in the back, is there a water problem now in the back where it's being diverted now?
Not that I'm aware of. When we moved in, one of the things I did is I looked at the backyard and said, "That looks strange." And I did ask if people had had problems with us, you know, flooding into their backyards. It doesn't appear that there's anything obvious. Obviously, the last year, we haven't had a whole lot of torrential downpours.
It's just been since August, right?
Just been since August that we moved in. But as we were talking with Jill and looking at the grade that the property was supposed to be, the waters basically are supposed to run from the northeast, according to the grading, to the southwest of the retention pond. What has been put up at some point in the past was on the north side and the south side, two berms. So effectively, any water running from the property to the north of us would hit that berm, run back to the west, and dump into our neighbor's yard to the west of us instead of kind of running across the property and down to that retention pond.
Okay.
I don't know if it's, you know, we only have to worry about it in one of those, you know, 100-year storms or what. I haven't really...
Okay. Well, now you're removing the berms, and it will go where it's intended to.
Right.
I appreciate the fact that you've worked with staff to not come in and just say, "I want, I want this, I want this." You're taking away and moving around and in the overall, reducing it from, what, 45 to 43 percent?
43 percent.
So we're ahead of the game, and he now will have access to the backyard.
Correct.
And not be trapped.
Right.
You know, in there. Kudos to you and staff for working together. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fleet?
Are you going to have any lighting on the patio area?
There currently is lighting in the back that exists that would light that area. So at this point, I don't think we're going to need any additional lighting.
Okay. The fire pit, is that a natural or will you have natural gas to it?
Yeah, natural gas is going to be piped there.
The wood, okay, so you're taking out the shed that's in the back.
Yes.
And I noticed when you take out the air conditioning, let's see, I guess on the northern border of the house, there's a, is there an air conditioning unit that's...
There's two air conditioning units. Those are remaining. They're not going to be relocated or removed.
But are they on the sidewalk that's being taken out or in their concrete?
No.
They already have their own pads?
The air conditioning unit's on the other side. The sidewalk, quite frankly, the sidewalk is a sidewalk to nowhere. It runs from the exit door in the garage to the back patio. It's in fantastic condition because it looks like nobody ever walked on it, but...
Only because nobody's ever walked on it.
Yes. But it was one of those things that we looked at when we bought the house and said, "Oh, that's interesting, but why?" And since, you know, we really can use the space on the patio, it makes more sense to pull up that concrete and, you know, regrade it and put in landscaping there. I think we haven't had a problem in the basement yet because of water, but that can't do anything but help because instead of having water pool on it, it'll go into the ground like it's supposed to.
Okay. No further questions.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I have a couple of questions. Regarding that door you just mentioned coming out of the garage, are you going to leave a pad there at the base of the door?
Yeah, there's one concrete...
One square.
Basically a four-by-four.
Yeah, I used to have a house with a garage door to nowhere as well.
Right.
We didn't put the sidewalk, and we just left the pad there. And I think I used it about three times when I lived there for about 11 years.
Yeah, that's exactly it. I figure just from the aesthetics of you've got a door, you need...
You need to be able to step down on something other than mud if it turns to mud or grass. Okay. The other question I have is in the different drawings, the one that looks like it's a nice drawing, it shows that a little bit of the existing driveway is still going to remain from what is being removed. Is that accurate?
Right.
Because the other drawing has a big circle around it and says, "removed," and it looks like it's the entire thing. I just wanted to understand.
The issue we ran into is if we, what we had initially planned on is taking out the asphalt driveway in total, putting in the patio, and then also leveling the backyard. Ran into the issue with the county of if you disturb more than 5,000 square feet at any one time, it, you have to get the geological survey and everything else, and that kind of ended up being, you know, the financial straw there. So what we've decided is to break this into three sections. The first section would be to do the back patio.
I love that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so what you'll see here is, in this first phase, we would do the patio, and we'd leave that wide driveway kind of with a little bit of a lake.
Could you move that just a little bit so that the home audience could see?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we're going to take these out as part of the first phase. The second phase, then, coming back in, we would take out the rest of the asphalt and put in a permeable paver, a patio that looks like this. So that would even, you know, increase the amount of permeable area. But because of the 5,000 square foot, we're going to do this in two phases. For tonight, the only thing we're looking at is putting in this patio, and we're going to remove this asphalt right here.
Okay.
And obviously, resotted at the time that we remove.
And so what you really want to do is you want to be able to have like an extra lane for a car beyond the width of the door.
Right.
You know, it's kind of what you have right there, but it's kind of twisted at an angle, and you want to kind of just square that off. Is that what your plan is in the future?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're going to make here to show...
Yeah, okay.
That's the final plan on it.
So question, is that, is that part of our, it's not. It's not part of the variance at this point?
No, that...
No. This is the only thing we're requesting.
Yeah, if he does this in the future, it would be a wash because there wouldn't be any additional impervious surface.
Okay. All right.
And in fact, it may end up being less because the county, I guess, is now starting to talk about permeable pavers.
As being...
Permeable not counted as impervious area.
Okay. All right. Well, those were my questions because it kind of looked a little odd, and then I was reading the other diagram, and I just wasn't quite sure what was happening.
We've made a number of iterations on this to try to make sure that we could, you know, meet all the needs and not run afoul, like I said, of that 5,000 square foot issue.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah. I understand that this is in an area that is not, that would not have precipitated the reduction in 35 to 45, and so it hasn't been a problem initially. Obviously, the grading is a, would be, would be a requirement. Are we doing a little overkill by making this man take out the shed, the driveway, the sidewalks in order to accommodate what his needs?
Well, the shed, quite frankly, I think I've got one neighbor here from behind that will probably be real happy that the shed's out. It is a large shed, you know.
Like the large?
Very, very large, very tall, very imposing in the yard, so, and not in the best shape. So that's going to come out regardless. I was planning on taking that regardless of what we did in the yard. The rest of the items, we did take out, you know, because we were trying to offset how much coverage.
Right, the percentage. And that's, that was just my question to staff.
We felt like, working with the applicant, that he was taking out things that didn't really help him with his yard improvements, like the extra part of the driveway and the concrete sidewalk that led to nowhere. So we felt like it was a good faith effort to help improve the situation, especially because it was over the 40 percent.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Pill?
Thank you. I don't really have anything new to ask, but just to sort of summarize, it looks like we're not in an existing flood area, so the old 40 percent rule would have held. And it looks like you're removing substantial amounts, so you're going to decrease the area of coverage from around 46 to 43, which moves it in the other area. And at the same time, it's going to be a more beautiful situation for both the neighbors behind you with the big, and I did see it, that's pretty big. And then also, you're one of the only houses on the block that has that double driveway like that. I didn't notice anybody else out there with that.
No. What I was told when I've asked neighbors when we moved in, because, you know, the house is different compared to most of the houses is there, you know, is because the people that lived there before, the son was wheelchair-bound, they put in the extra driveway. Now, I understand historically, there was also a large number of vehicles parked there.
Okay.
Which I think that was, you know, that accommodated it all, so...
And in talking to one of your neighbors who was walking by when I was at your house, they thought that was going to be a nice change to have a little more grass and green out in front. So I think the entire project is very complimentary for the neighborhood as well as the neighbors, and then I think there's a direct correlation and benefit for your family.
Thank you.
So I wish you luck with it. I think it's a good plan.
Thank you very much.
My comments are such. First, I commend you for working with staff so well. It's a pleasure to see instead of having to go head-to-head. I do have a couple of questions. On the south side of your house.
Yes.
You have what appears to be a stone area, stoned area?
Yes.
From the driveway to the backyard fence. Will that be...
The plan is to get rid of that lovely area and re-landscape that. I don't have it in this plan because, again, we were very concerned about butting up against that 5,000, but as I understand, that was an additional parking area that they used previously. We have no need for it as a parking area. So part of the idea is that when we were doing the patio, that we're going to be able to take out, you know, that gravel and eventually get that resotted or at least re-landscaped. But personally, I do not like that crust-stoned right there.
That leads me to say, beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Yes.
And I don't think that's beautiful, as you say, too.
Yeah.
Okay. One other question I had was, the flow of water is going to be from your house to the back end of your lot.
Correct.
It's going to sheet down, and it's going to sheet also to the south.
Right.
The construction of your seat wall, which I like very much, since it is a half-moon shape going from north to south, I can see that catching water and holding it. So for purposes of construction, this is nothing to do with our, but a suggestion might be to put some weep holes in there.
Yeah. The, in fact, Jill asked our landscape architect, you know, the same question, you know, whether or not that would, the seat wall would catch the water, and he said that it would be accommodated in there so that the water, any water from, you know, that would run across the patio wouldn't be captured in that seat wall.
But it'll be able to penetrate and flow through.
Right.
Okay. That's, then, on the east side of your house.
Yep.
Right adjacent to the house, you have what looks like a boarded-up area right up against the house. It looks like it's probably, I couldn't get in your backyard, nobody was home today when I was there, so I looked from the neighbor's fence. But it looks like it's about three foot, maybe by four foot. There's some boards in there.
Oh, on the ground, right up next to the house?
On the ground.
That...
Going to be gone also?
Yeah, that's actually, the house that we lived in before, that was actually sitting up on the porch in order to make it the correct level, handicapped accessible. So at that time, my son was in a wheelchair. So we brought that with us. At the time, I was looking, what could I do with that? But yes, that's basically just sitting there until we knew what we were going to do with the backyard.
Perhaps that might follow the shed.
Yes.
And, okay, well, again, my comments to you are, I recommend very highly what you've done. I like it very much, and I think you're only going to enhance the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay. May we have, since we have a request for variance, may we have a reading of the findings effect, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The purpose of this variance is to allow the construction of a patio which would make a portion of the backyard accessible to the owner's son who suffers from a disability. The backyard is currently inaccessible to him due to its slope. The applicant is mitigating any adverse impact by removing existing impervious surfaces. Criteria number two, the plead of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant's removing various existing impervious surfaces upon the property so as to reduce the overall lot coverage from approximately 46 percent to approximately 43 percent. This removal should improve stormwater drainage upon the property. The applicant faces a unique hardship due to his son's disability. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed patio constitutes a typical backyard amenity and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The overall reduction in the property's lot coverage will improve stormwater drainage to benefit the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, the findings effect are hereby unanimously approved. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Planning and Zoning Item 12021, Item A, a zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35 percent maximum allowed in the R3 single-family detached residence district. Someone?
Second.
Okay. That's a motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Any questions on the motion? May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay. The, we have recommended approval of a zoning code variance request served for you, and we are only a recommending body, and staff can tell you when you go before Thursday evening Committee of the Hall.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Planning and zoning Item 12022, Joe Fitzpatrick of Van Brugen Signs with Fifth Third Bank regarding the property located at 640 Pasquenelli Drive for the following. A zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
My name is Joe Fitzpatrick. I'm with Van Brugen Signs. Fifth Third Bank is in the process of rebranding all their locations. We have removed three signs off of the building so far. They're requesting the second sign for the building. Actually, they feel it's an inadequate signage for the building, being that it's off of Ogden Avenue. We've got one sign there for the monument, which is on the northeast corner, and that's been redone already with the new signage, their new branding. So we are requesting the second sign, which I know is not allowed. There's only one sign allowed, and that's going to be on the south side of the building.
Okay. So according to our zoning code, you are only allowed one sign, and you're requesting two?
Right.
Okay. Very good. Staff, would you care to...
The applicant has worked with staff over the past year to get the approval for the one sign, which is the pylon sign replacement, which is allowed by code, and then apply for this variation to allow a second sign, and this should provide additional visibility for customers coming from the south.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? We'll close the public comment, and we'll start with Commissioner Pill, if you would.
I really have no questions in general. I like the addition of the sign. I think it's, I could see exactly what you'd want it. I drive up and down that street almost every other day, so I would support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Right. We're going from three to two, and...
There was four on there at one time.
Forty-two.
Yeah, four signs, yeah. Now we're going to two signs.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I don't have any, any real comments other than it's replacing an existing sign, same size. It's just a matter of, it's just nameplates changing.
Their new look.
Their logo.
New look, right.
I don't have a problem whatsoever with it.
Commissioner Fleet?
On the, on the new sign, will it be lit at all?
Yes. Yes, it will.
Okay, that's good, yeah. Certainly agree with the positioning of that. And I noticed when I was driving by there today that actually the, the sign is out in front, supposedly visible from Pasquenelli. It's only visible when you're, when you're doing the limit, the speed limit with the tree there.
Right.
It's only visible for less than a second.
Right.
It flicks by, and...
Right.
Maybe that, I don't know about that tree, but anyway, it cuts down on the visibility.
It does. It does. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
You obviously need the second sign there for the people, your customers, know where you're at.
Correct.
And I agree. It looks good. I have no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleet, I drove up and down the street looking for it myself. Of course, my wife says...
He was speeding.
My wife says I get lost easy, so... I did have just one... My wife says I get lost easy, so. I did have just one procedural question, and I really like how you've taken down all the other signs. They do have another ground sign at the entrance to the parking lot. Does that impact anything?
I believe that one would be considered a directional sign that would be permitted by right.
Okay, and then there is a signage on the glass entrance way of the door.
Right, and we can check the square footage on that, but I believe it's within the sixty percent that's allowed by code.
Okay, and I applaud you, the way you've taken down all the signs on the building. It's going to make it look much better.
Yes, we agree.
All right, any further comments? Okay, since we have a request for variance, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The applicant is proposing to reduce the number of existing signs upon the property from, that should say, four to two, as part of its logo rebranding efforts. The applicant requires two signs rather than the one allowable sign due to the property's setback from Ogden Avenue and Route eighty-three and due to elevation differences from the surrounding properties. Criteria number two, the plead of the owners due to unique circumstances. The two proposed signs will contain less than the total allowable sign area for the property. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed signage is less than what exists today, will be aesthetically pleasing, and will be consistent with existing signage of surrounding businesses.
If you agree with these findings, raise your hands. Okay, we are unanimous in agreement. Findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. Therefore, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Planning and Zoning Item 12022, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pell, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Question on the motion, please. A rule call?
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, John, a question.
Yes, sir.
Since this is pretty much just a blanket request for a variance to increase the number of allowable signs, should a number, a motion with a number be attached?
No, that's always added to the ordinance, and the ordinance always says that the signs have to be installed pursuant to their plans submitted in conjunction with the variance.
Which would reflect two signs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and go in peace.
We're set to go.
Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item, Planning and Zoning Item 12023, Don D. Leonardis of McGrath Lexus Westmont regarding the property at 500 East Ogden for the following. Item A, zoning code variance request to permit parking in the required front yard setback. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Don D. Leonardis. I represent McGrath Lexus. We're asking for zoning change on the property in front of our dealership for a better display area because of the way our dealership was originally designed. The display area is very hard to see from the street, so we were asking for some additional cars to put, be put on a higher level so people could see the cars as they drive by. Not that they can't see one hundred and fifty cars, but it gives us a little better display area, and that's what we're asking for.
Okay, would you address the specific hardship, though, since you are requesting a variance?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Perhaps I'll, since our code does not allow parking in this area, for you to stay with your existing parking area as close as you can get to the street, you're what, about five foot below the level of Ogden Avenue?
Yes, sir.
So pretty much people can drive by you without really seeing what you have for sale?
They see the tops of our cars, the very tops of our windshields, and that really a good display area like a lot of the other dealerships. When they were set up, they were set up higher, like BMW next door, Lamborghini, Mercedes-Benz, excuse me, they're all leveled with the street. We're, for whatever reason, I don't know if it was because of the water, runoff, or I really don't know, but again, it's just for a better display for our area.
So you feel really, though, that the people cannot see driving by what you've got for sale?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Does staff have any?
Because of the grade change and easement, staff recommends less cars in this area to be set back at least five feet, which would be similar to other setbacks that have been approved for other dealerships, and for the cars to be set on something a little bit more durable, like grasscrete or pavers, to be reviewed by our engineering staff. And this would also help with line of sight concerns as, as customers are leaving or entering the dealership.
Okay, thank you.
What was the specific number that staff recommended, again?
Four.
Of cars?
Oh, four cars.
Or two on each side of the Ingress-Negress.
My suggestion would be if the commission is, wants to consider a different number than what the applicant has proposed, that it might be beneficial for the board to get that input and perhaps make that as a separate motion if you are inclined to approve this variance.
Well said, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, if I may, I agree with the two on each side because it's not blocking any, the original plan was, on the other side, there was a driveway that was pulling out from BMW and our store. The two that they recommend are inside our dealership, or not inside our dealership, inside our driveway. The only thing I would like to request, if I could put two more additional right in the middle, that are, that are probably twenty-five yards away from the street, or the entrance, right, not the street of Ogden, right in the middle.
If you could put a picture on the parking, on your parking, and show us exactly where you would like to put these vehicles, that would help us.
Okay, great. Right now, they're recommending the two here. Two here, on one side of the driveway that right, pulls into our service drive, and two on this side, which is great. What I would like would just be two more right in the middle, so it's not blocking any of the driveway coming out of BMW or any vision of anybody pulling in or out.
Okay, very good. Let's start with Commissioner Pell, if you would, please?
Okay. First, I am up and down that street many times a day, and by far and away, you have the most beautiful facility on the street.
Thank you. Spent a lot of money on it.
You did, and it shows it. It's a class operation. It's got tremendous width, which gives a great exposure on the Ogden Avenue stretch. I was surprised to see this. I mean, I know you guys want to sell cars, but you have such a classy brand. I was surprised you would want to do this. I sort of thought this is like balloons and blow-up gorillas and stuff like that. So I was surprised to see this, and I'll be interested to hear everybody else's opinion. I initially was against this because I think it detracts from what you've built there. It's, it's beautiful, and I don't know how anybody could drive by that and not think it's a car dealer.
Well, they could tell it's a car dealer because it is a beautiful building, I agree with you, but they just don't get the essence of all the cars that we have displayed. As far as the dealership, it's absolutely, it is gorgeous. It's probably one of the nicest ones in the United States, as far as Lexus also. It's just that the displays, when they, again, when they built our property, they didn't raise it enough to show our cars, and that's, that's our concern.
I understand that, and everybody has topography issues with, you know, some people are low, some are high, some got trees and stuff, but it seems that, that your sales, when you look at your dealership in comparison to Lexus throughout the United States, has not been hindered too much by this.
Oh, sure.
It's, it's one of the leaders in the country. We know that, so it's, it's really good. I also have the opportunity to sit on another board or commission that is putting together the plans for the next twenty years for the Village of Westmont, and we had a chance to have a several-hour meeting on Monday. It's a two-year project, and we're about at the halfway point, and one of the things they looked at is the beautification of Ogden Avenue from Route eighty-three to the Downers Grove border. And specifically, they addressed the lack of space in many areas with green between the street and the sidewalk and the sidewalk and the business. You've got one of the most beautifully landscaped, flower urns, beautiful plantings, mature color and things like that. So this would seem that it would also destroy and take away. So we're in the middle of a hundred thousand dollar-plus project to plan out what our village should look like. The Ogden Avenue corridor, they want to see a little bit more green, nice sidewalks for people to move around and things like that, and here we're going to go ahead and start taking it away. And I think, to me, it would detract somewhat from the look of the front of your building because I think those cars would block the sightlines to the building also. Now, I know you've given this great thought as, as your staff.
Been about twenty years of figuring this out.
I understand why you're, why you're here. I just wanted to present an opposing, and maybe not an opposing, but maybe a contradicting view.
You know what? I, I never looked at, of course, I didn't know what you guys were proposing for the next two years, and as far as eliminating our grass, I agree with you. Probably with that, I'd probably go back, go along with you and just put the two cars on each side and leave our frontage open.
Mm-hmm.
Leave all that grass, because we're definitely going to maintain the grass. The grass isn't going to go anywhere. Flowers are going to stay there, and just those two on the each edge, I don't think it's going to distract because those four cars are going to be really in front of our service department and not in front of our dealership itself. And again, then, all the grass, that seventy-five feet or a hundred feet of grass that is there would stay and, again, still be maintained.
So understood.
If that would, if that would be a problem, the four cars are happily accepted.
Well, I'll listen with great interest to my fellow commissioners, but I want to compliment you on running a world-class business.
Thank you.
In a gorgeous location with a massive investment.
Yes.
And it's a compliment to our community.
Thank you. I'll make sure Michael understands that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I agree with everything that Greg said. I would, however, say that, having looked at it, it wouldn't bother me a great deal to have the two and two. As a matter of fact, it wouldn't even bother me a great deal to have two in the middle without detracting from your, your site and how well you've done in, in your site planning. So that's my...
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I have some questions and a comment. First of all, I don't see a problem with placing a number of cars there, and six was the number I was thinking of. I didn't know exactly how you put it there, but I took a look at that and I thought, my gosh, you have a fairly large space on one side, which, you know, the total number that you had originally planned was too many, but, you know, four on that side would probably be okay, and two on the other side would be fine. My question is, is, would you use the grasscrete underneath versus pavers? Because, you know, if you're using pavers, that kind of, it makes it more solid. Grasscrete, the grass grows through and you can't really see, I mean, although it's there, you know, the structure is there, you see grass on top of it, you know, so it, it will look more like grassy area. That's, that's, you know, my comment. And then the other is, question is, is, how, how often are you going to display these? Are they going to be all the time, or during the winter months, you won't do it?
We were planning twenty-four hours, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Three sixty-five, okay, even in the snow. Because I was thinking, you know, that it's just, you know, having those out in the middle of the snow might not be in your favor, but then again...
To be very honest with you, until it happens, I don't know, you know, if it's, if it's going to be harder for us to take them on and off or more destructive to our property, which probably more, I mean...
That was my thinking.
With the snow that we've had lately, I don't think so, but...
Last couple of years, well, last year.
You know, it could possibly hurt us by keeping them up there in the winter and because of the, because then we got to come down and drive on our grass too.
Yeah.
Which is not...
That was my last question.
That's not what we want either.
How are you going to get those in and out of there? Were you planning on maybe using some sort of a, you know, coming off of Ogden Avenue and driving them up, or strictly staying on your side of the?
We were planning on just staying right on our side, using some of the sidewalk, and then pulling up and backing them into the designated parking spots.
Yeah, and you'll maintain that sidewalk in case something happens to be correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure that gets in the record. Okay.
And just so you know, there's nothing going to be, that's going to be extraordinarily heavy besides automobiles. There aren't going to be dump trucks or any kind of...
Typically, these, these type of commercial walks in industrial areas or business areas are the same as a driveway, a residential driveway, so I'm sure it should handle the...
That's what we're looking at.
The, the weight of the cars. Okay, that's all my questions.
Thank you.
Just to jump into your point, Commissioner, the petitioner would be required to sign a letter of indemnification for the use in that area, which I think would also...
Well, that's because there's an easement there.
Would there be any provisions for the sidewalk?
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman just made a, had a, has a concern about driving cars on the sidewalk.
Yes, sir.
Because they're not designed for that purpose. They're not constructed for that purpose. We'd prefer you get the cars up from the north end of your property up over the grass, curb, and on straight onto the grass rather than using a public sidewalk. Do they need an indemnification agreement while the cars are going to be located strictly on their private property? Correct?
Well, the question was, would there be any sort of language, maybe a reasonable condition of the variance approval for the sidewalk condition to be maintained?
To the extent they damage any public property...
As a result.
While moving cars in and out, we certainly can add that, so it's crystal clear. It would be implied, of course, if they damage our property, they've got to fix it. But we certainly can add that, and I think also we should discourage their use of driving on a public sidewalk to get their cars in place. I think they should use skids or whatever it takes to get the cars up over their curb.
Sure.
Onto the grass, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you're driving over bushes and to do so.
No, there's nothing there.
Yeah, okay.
There's nothing to add to the curbside, on either side of the driveway.
And secondly, there is a utility easement that they would be required to sign an indemnification letter to use.
If, if you insist, yes. It's, it's their property with an easement over it, so by putting something right on top of the easement, are you talking about would they, if they damaged some of these...
Right.
Utilities underneath the ground?
Or if the utility needs to get in there for any reason.
Well, then they just have to move their cars.
What type of utility is it, by the way?
It's on the plat.
Yeah, it, it doesn't specify. It's a blank.
Probably electric gas.
I can tell you there's electric, there's a fiber optic cable there.
I think it's everything.
Comcast. I know that for a fact.
Just a blank easement.
But if they go in and do work, you know, you'd have to pull your cars out.
Anyway.
Let them do the work. They'd restore it, get the cars back on. Of course, whether they'd restore it.
To what we like?
To what you like.
I'm sure we can change it.
It's an issue between doing utilities. They're all around the block right now doing it. They're digging it up.
Oh, they are?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They've been up and down Black Hawk and on the backside of Plaza, and they already did in front of Acura.
They did? I didn't notice that.
I'm finished.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, I'm sort of concerned with the idea of, well, first of all, the types of cars that you're showing here are more maybe sort of the hot cars that you would have.
Yes, sir.
That you would want to show the public.
Yes, sir.
Because obviously, you have a lot of cars in there, but these would be, you're like, you're showing the Thunderbird and...
Some of the flashier cars that we, that we sell on our used car lot.
Yeah, and, and you say you would leave these out there, you're, at least in non-snow weather, that you would look out...
Yes.
Twenty-four, seven?
Yes, sir.
And to get out here, to put them out here, would you, when I drove through there today, it looked like there's curbing all the way around that you'd have to maybe move a car and then put a little ramp in to get them up on the grass?
Probably going to have to cut a curb so we can pull up onto there.
Okay, cut your own curb?
Yes, sir, right. So we can get up there easily because pulling the cars up over that curb, these little sports cars?
Yeah.
It's very hard. They're not trucks. If there were trucks, it'd be a little different, but the sports cars would probably end up cutting a bit of a curb or a, I'm not sure what the words are, but to bring it up easily, if it's just a slight cut into the curb or remove... removal. And then, you know, just like they do with handicap, that we'd have to have our landscaper look at and do it correctly. More so for our benefit, to be honest with you, so we don't damage our cars.
Well, the footprint of, say, the cars that are shown here and the weight that they put on the area, I'm assuming this would be within the engineering limits of the easement for something like this to drive over it. But say, what if you had a large, you know, you had a really nice expedition to put out there? That's, you know, weighing instead of, you know, it's weighing more closer to three tons than.
Done and a half.
One and a half or two ton.
Our plan was not to put big trucks out there. The biggest reason is because then it would block our lot. And the whole idea of showing the cars is so that people can see our lot. So if we put bigger trucks out there, they're going to be more of a hindrance. They're going to see those four trucks and not our display that we want. So that's why I put the sports cars up there and the off brands, so people can see we sell off brands and the sportier cars. They know we sell Lexus. So that's the big plan.
And the other thought I had, had you considered the idea of using, in the existing part of spaces that you have, to put a ramp?
We've had ramps years when we first opened. And to be honest with you, they're more work and they're more dangerous than leaving them flat on the ground. Because we've had a couple that have actually tilted because, you know, when the, our porters bring them up, they might go a little bit too fast or the vehicle might be a little bit too heavy or the ramp itself is starting to get a little bit old. So we tried probably in the last 20 years, not recently, but the first probably 10 or 12 since I've been there, probably three times. And it just didn't work because, again, it got more dangerous than helpful because of that reason.
That's good. I'm glad you shared that with us. Okay, no further questions here.
Commissioner Thomas?
I agree with the no racks. Not for your brand, in my head anyway. I'm also in favor of the two and two on each side of the driveway. And what I was noticing, it's tilted.
It is tilted, yes, sir.
Is that going to, are you going to build it up on the back?
Yes, so they are laying flat.
And when you do that, aren't you hiding?
No, we're not going to bring it up. We just want to bring it flat with the sidewalk because it is pitched.
Right. If you would just pull the cars up, they're going to be up like that in comparison to.
That's not what we want. We want to bring it level, so this would be brought up. When we do put the pavers in, maybe, I don't know, we'll do more pavers so when they pull up, it'll be flat and not.
We don't want to show the bottom of our cars.
Right. We have nice mufflers also.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have. I agree with staff's concern about the no racks and the two, the suggestion of the two and two on each side of the driveway. And he's clearing up the level of the cars that'll be placed there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to say that your request with all of your information makes me a very happy man. I thought I used to pay high property taxes till I saw yours.
Yes.
I'm not going to complain anymore.
In fact, when Mike gave me that, because I had to go to him to get it, he says, now make sure nobody else sees this. I said, well, there'll be 15 other people going to see it, but I don't think there's anything to be embarrassed about.
No, sir, there isn't. My only complaint is, I really am not bothered by the amount of cars. I wish I could wave a magic wand and raise your entire property three foot up. Unfortunately, I cannot. But you have such a large expanse from your first driveway, your first entranceway off Ogden until your combination driveway with your next door neighbor there.
Yes, sir.
That you could put an awful lot of automobiles in there. My main concern, and the number four strikes me as very good with the people, I'm worried about a sightline on the eastern side of the driveway. I would be more concerned if we could have four cars to the west of the driveway.
Or if I could recommend instead of having then, excuse me, on the east immediately off, that I put them into farther, to the, our outer boundaries instead of on the curb itself, but bring it over maybe two or three cars so people can't see and pull out.
Okay, then the screening though from your next door neighbor, would that preclude people from seeing those first two cars until they're almost upon them?
I don't believe so, sir.
No?
No. Because their frontage is as long, not as long as ours, but as wide as ours. So I don't think it would disturb them at all. You know, first of all, it's a health home. But if we do put them closer, I could, again, you know, propose to keep smaller cars there so there is a better sightline. And more so even for our customers, you know, for safety for them pulling in and out. Because there is a lot of traffic that goes in and out of there.
I'll defer to the attorney. John, should we recommend that they stay so far back from the sidewalk for the sightline? Or?
I think you should recommend a number and if the sightline, line of sight is a concern, then yes, you should help to specify a certain setback from their driveway east.
Staff, do we have anything in our ordinance that?
We have a line of. We have a line of sight diagram that we can use and we'll need a revised site plan from the applicant before he can go to the village board that would show whatever the planning commission would recommend. And so we can compare that to this line of sight diagram and make sure it meets those requirements.
Okay. And then, sir, you're saying that you intend to build up the property so that it's roughly.
Driveable flat, so that when they pull up, the car's flat on there. So there's not, like we said, not, the nose showing up instead of our car itself.
For one, you can't park on the grass. I mean, just common sense, first time it gets wet, you're going to slide off.
Slide right off.
And then for you to build this up with anything, they're going to have some engineering that's got to be done.
They would need to show us a plan and we would like to work with you.
Sure, absolutely.
In order to bring that before the board as well.
Do you think that would necessitate a landscaping plan that might have to come before us or?
I don't believe so.
Not usually.
Yeah, it's not really.
That's usually in conjunction with site improvements. And this is, and this is just pure great engineering issues.
Okay.
And the engineering or the leveling would only be to the extent to accommodate the number of cars that were approved or would it be the entire?
That would be my plan, sir.
The entire elevation along Ogden?
I think if you were to raise it, you're creating a further hindrance to see the cars that are parked there.
Okay, but I'm asking, he wants to level out where the cars are going to be displayed. And it's obviously, there's going to be a lot of still open space to look forward to that. I'm just asking, are you, whether we would require them to have it consistent all the way along or just for the areas they're going to display the cars?
I believe the intent was just for the display area and we also have to be mindful of the 5,000 square foot of disturbance trigger for stormwater permits and engineering. Is that correct, Don? Is you were only planning to do the area on?
Yeah. Because I have to echo Commissioner Pill's concerns or adulation, if you will. Your dealership is beautifully landscaped.
Thank you.
Very nice when I was out there today.
All right, I would like an informal poll of the.
May I ask another question, please? With your permission, Mr. Chairman? I was just curious with, if you go ahead and do this, it sort of opens the door. There's a lot of other dealers. And, you know, we could have many other dealers proposing this. Do you feel personally that it would detract from that corridor, which has really become a beautiful car corridor? If everybody starts doing this? And then my second question is, you're somewhat segregated right now. Is there any security concerns that these cars would be vandalized by skateboarders and kids riding bikes up and down the sidewalks and things like that?
To be very honest with you, we don't have that much traffic anyway. But they'd be far enough back, even though the pavers would be up to the sidewalk, the cars would be back far enough that people walking by or skateboarders are going to have enough room, even if they did fall, they're going to fall on a paver or the grass and not the car.
No, no, I meant kids out there messing around at night and stuff like that.
To be honest with you.
I have a business in the area and I find kids all the time around there.
We get it now. They still walk down, in fact, we just had it Saturday, they did three cars.
Well, this just puts them right out in front. That's what I was asking.
It makes it a little bit easier, but.
But anyway, so that's an area that you probably need to think about. But I was just, you know, so if every other dealer ends up with this, what's the streetscape going to look like?
Well, I honestly think everybody's up on the street already. If you look down our street, our Acura store, they're right up to the sidewalk, but on the other side of the sidewalk, they're still on property because they're lower and flat. If you get down to Mercedes-Benz, Mercedes-Benz is already up to the sidewalk also and a little bit lower, so they have a nice sight view. A Lamborghini across the street is flat with the sidewalk. So I think everybody else is already up there besides us. And again, you know, it's, we're not doing it to compete with anybody else as far as displays, but to show, again, cars that we'd like to sell and a little bit more display area of what we have to sell.
Okay. You know, but you raised a question, does this set a precedent? And the precedent, in some ways, has already been set because Porsche has some displays in the front yard setback, Lamborghini, I believe, does. Alpha Motors came in, I think it was denied for Alpha Motors. Certainly, I think they have a somewhat unique hardship compared to the other dealers because of the slope of their property. So, you know, be within your rights to judge each case individually and deny a request if you don't think it's appropriate in the future. And if the comprehensive plans further along and that's even stronger evidence not to grant something like this in the future, you can use that.
May I also interject with a quick comment or question? We're certain that the vehicles you'll have on display will be very high-class, nice automobiles. But one of the things that's come up over time with at least the village board's review of automobile dealerships is that we've tried to ensure that it's going to be newer model. If there are used cars, they're typically of that same brand. So it was unclear to me in some of the information, it sounded like there would be used cars, but are there other brands that would be for sale?
Probably, yes.
Can you tell us more about that?
The reason being is because, like I said, everybody knows we sell Lexus. And that's nine times out of 10, we change our front line, even though you can't see it all the time. And we put off brands up there so people, when they're driving by, if they can't see the cars, they can see a Porsche or Chevrolet or Buick or whatever the case may be. Because, again, they know we sell a Buick. So somebody driving by our dealership says, there's a Lexus dealer, that's Pullin, we want to buy an ES350. They're not going to drive by and drive by a Lexus dealer and say, I wonder if they've got a Porsche. So that's the idea of changing our front line and having those four cars be different cars so people can see. Or if we have a real nice Lexus that's an older one, like an SC convertible, that's kind of hard to find, that would be up there also.
So the intention would be to have different brands?
Yes, ma'am.
Or older, model, rarer Lexus?
Yes.
So maybe we can work that into the ordinance. To Shannon's point, the village board is very concerned about used car dealerships impacting negatively the high-quality new car dealerships.
I don't think we're the typical used car dealership.
Understood, understood. And, but they don't want a Chevy Impala sitting up there.
Yeah, I understand.
Next to the Porsches, Lamborghinis, Lexuses.
I agree.
And maybe we can put some reasonable restriction that it's intended for higher-end used automobiles, not more than two years old or however we can phrase, older.
Classic or some.
Yeah, classic Lexus.
Yeah, that's, I've got no problem with that. I agree with you. The last thing I know Mike wants to do is downgrade the authenticity of our dealership and the cars we sell to downgrade it by putting maybe an old '69 Impala, that's a nice car, but it's really not the Lexus image. And I don't think, to be honest with you, I don't think Lexus would even like that. You know, when they come, because they're by probably two, three times a week with meetings with Mike. And having them pull up and seeing an old Impala up there or something that's not their standards, I think, and I don't, and I know Mike would not tolerate it. We might want to try to get away with it as salesmen, but I know Mike wouldn't. It wouldn't last long.
But just for the edification of the board, I mean, the wording of that, what kind of cars would be up there is not what we are considering. That'll be all taken care of at the ordinance.
Nor the age of the cars that are.
Anything like that.
I don't think we can really limit, you know, tie their hands.
We're just concerned about parking in the front yard. And I, from what I'm gathering, we'll probably have a separate recommendation as to the number. Okay, Commissioner Fleet?
Another, well, just to sort of go back to, however many cars are out there, are you looking at constructing a raised portion for each car or raising the whole length of?
No, just for each car, just those four positions.
So there'd be islands out there?
Right.
It would be roughly horizontal?
Again, you know, our landscaper would probably design something that would, I don't know if he would brick it all the way up or have grass under there and then put the bricks down. That's something I'd have to get with them on. But that, it would just be those four or six, whatever you gentlemen agree on, those would be the only areas that would be raised.
And I'm sure your landscaper's going to make that very nice, you know, it'll blend in.
He does a nice job, yes.
Mr. DeLeonardis.
DeLeonardis, it's okay.
Hung tight this evening. There will be no illumination on these vehicles?
Well, we do have all our lights in front already.
Something specifically pointed toward Ogden?
No, sir. No, not to face Ogden. No, no, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'd like a poll of the board members. I think I'm getting the feel we should recommend a separate motion, a quantity of cars. So if you feel so inclined, an informal poll, we'll start with Commissioner Pill. Quantity?
Four.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Six.
Six, maximum of six.
Six, max.
Commissioner Fleet?
Four.
Four. And I also think four would not be a bad number. So we appear to be tied, so.
Why doesn't someone make a motion after the initial motion is made to limit to no more than four to six vehicles?
That's what I was thinking of. We'll kick it upstairs. All right, any further questions? Since we have a request for a variance, maybe we have a reading of the findings of fact.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The applicant seeks this variance to improve the visibility of its high-end automobiles and to provide a greater showcase for such automobiles. The applicant may be at a competitive disadvantage with other dealerships who maintain such displays within the front yard setback and therefore cannot yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The proposed display of autos would be consistent with that of other dealerships along Ogden Avenue. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located along a heavily commercial corridor with numerous automobile dealerships and other commercial developments. This proposed display of automobiles will be consistent with the character of the area and consistent with similar displays by other automobile dealerships.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a zoning code variance request are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Planning and Zoning Item 12023, Item A, a zoning code variance request to permit parking in the required front yard setback. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fleet and I.
He was first, I was second.
Okay, it's a motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Thought that's the way I heard it. Okay, question on the motion, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, since we're concerned with the number of cars, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees on the right, planning and zoning item 12023, item B, or a quantitative limit of four to six automobiles to be parked in the required front yard setback.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and then, John, of course, on the ordinance level, one is presented to the Board of Trustees, specifically the sight line will be a very important thing. All right, sir, you have our recommendation-
Thank you, gentlemen.
-and staff can tell you when you'll go before the village board.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You, sir. Planning and zoning item 12024, Thomas McCabe of SpaceCo with Mercedes-Benz of Westmont, regarding the property located at 200 East Ogden for the following. A, zoning code variance request to reduce the required setbacks for a landlocked lot to approximately six foot in the B2 general business district for the purpose of constructing a parking lot addition. B, site and landscaping plan approved.
Evening. Tonight, we're before you, I think we've got our last piece here. Is this on here?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
I hope this is not the last one.
No.
Hope you keep adding.
Well, actually, I hadn't been here in a while, so I asked AutoNation what we could do to come back and see you. Tonight, what we have is the two pieces, it's the well site that the village owns, and then the piece north of there is a piece that AutoNation owns, and they'd like to put those two pieces together and provide more parking. So this is actually turned in a little different orientation. But the, down on the bottom of the page is where the Mercedes garage is now, and then Ogden's out that way there. So back in, I believe, 2008, we and the village entered into an agreement to lease that property. This was a plan that AutoNation had put together and really hasn't acted on. So now we've come back, we had two scenarios there, one was our piece, and I'll go back quickly here. It's two L-shaped pieces, the northern piece AutoNation owns, and the southern piece is what the village of Westmont owns. And you can see the one, the white area, that's where your existing well house is today. So, again, we had two plans there, one to just use our piece for parking, and then the second one was to put the two pieces together. The two pieces together gets, eliminates dead ends, makes the traffic circulate a lot better, and then obviously picks up some more parking for us. So that's what we're tonight. The variation really is, is to make these lots combine with the lots that we own to the south and to the east, otherwise we'd have larger buffer areas, and so that's why we have the reduction in the setbacks. And then on the south side, the bank is a property here, they've got, there's a group of trees there, and we've got a little extra space there. We worked with Jill, we're going to slide that over a little bit to save, probably the only, there's maybe about six or eight trees there.
Six mature honey locusts.
Okay. Everything else on the site, I don't know if you've been back there, you can't see it from anything, it's, it needs something. So that's what we're here before you tonight.
I had a question for the attorney and about the condition of the lot, and he told me that a large portion of the property was leased to Mercedes-Benz all this time?
Correct. I think since 2000, the agreement went into effect, I believe, in 2008.
Two thousand and six.
I'm sorry, 2006.
I would just question why this property was not kept up to the standards of the rest of your property, which is exceptional.
I can't answer that question.
A failure on your part, I think.
That's right.
I'm disappointed you heard that. Okay.
Mr. McCabe has been communicating with our staff throughout this process, and we would like to incorporate the engineering concerns, public works, maintenance, and landscaping additions into the final plans. And as Mr. McCabe noted, he plans to keep the existing mature honey locusts and then work with the stormwater constraints on the site.
All right, thank you, and let's start with, great, did I start with you last time? Okay, Commissioner Thomas, if you would, please.
As far as staff has no problems with this?
As long as, as long as the comments from the report are incorporated with the stormwater, saving trees, adding additional landscaping, staff is comfortable.
They're aware of engineering concerns that we-
Yes, yes, these have all been communicated to Mr. McCabe.
No, as far as, as long as the engineering concerns are addressed, you know, I have no problems with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleet, if you would.
No questions, sir.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I really only have one question, is that if this goes through and, you know, the new parking spaces are available, you know, when you do all the work, when the village exercises the well and pumps the water out, is it going to be able to be done in such a way as to not disturb that parking, or do you have to make sure it's vacated during that period? And I just want to make sure that, you know, anything that the village does doesn't, you know, doesn't come back to us and say, oh, gee, you know, a vehicle was damaged because the water was pumping out at that quick rate and didn't make it into the sewer and it made it to the car.
Right, and we're aware of that. What we'll probably do is stripe out those for no parking, and then if those end up being the last spots, then they would probably park there, but we can stripe those out so that no cars there.
Yeah, and as long as there's notifications made to the people, obviously, I don't know if this is going to be used for customer parking or vehicle parking, or if it's going to be used for your staff parking, you know?
It'd be all for inventory.
Inventory, okay. So if it's inventory, your people are going to know that if the village is coming to exercise the pump, that they're not going to be parking there.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that's all my concern is. Everything else I think is a great idea.
The other item is the area that we're showing in white, that's basically the well house and then the area around there, the way it is now, because there's some gravel, there's some access points, and we actually talked to staff, and they'd like to see, I think Public Works even said, you can pave more of that area just to get rid of that. So we're going to have more, more spots there, and so we've got some flexibility there to, again, stripe out some areas that will affect the pumps.
Yeah, and I did, that made me think about the other question I had when I was reading this, is the fence and the entrance, you know, is that, that's going to be changed?
Yes, we'll work, we'll work with Public Works to see what they need there.
Okay.
Because right now, there's a fence, there's actually a fence over on the west side, and then there's also an easement, we have an easement through our property and then into the site as well.
Right.
So we'll get that worked out, correct.
All right. That's all my questions and comments.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, so this is a long-term lease on the village property?
Correct.
Well, as long as all the engineering concerns are met, and I feel that this is a win-win for both Mercedes and for the village, so I'm-
Commissioner Pill?
Yeah, I think it's a pretty good idea. It took me a while to figure it out, then I realized that north was not orientated to the top of the page. I sat there for the longest time and couldn't understand how that worked, and then finally I looked at the north arrow. I had a question, continuing on Commissioner Fidesco's comment. So in our write-ups here, we're told that when the wells are tested, it's a brackish, rust-colored water that comes out. You referred to the high rate and volume, so where's that water going to go? Do you have to, is there going to be some kind of a, like a drain right there that you'll put in that'll take it underground to the detention area?
We can do that, actually, this is a comment, I don't know exactly where it comes out, so I can't tell you exactly where this is going to be, but we'll certainly have a drain there for it, and then also keep the cars, you know, significantly away from there.
It'll discolor the pavement even.
Yeah.
Is what we got in our write-ups.
Right, and I saw that, correct.
Curious if somebody's addressed how that's going to be, you know, because it is, it's one of our cornerstone facilities in the village, and, I mean, I don't know that how many people are going to be back there to see that, but-
Right.
Still, you don't want to have it getting bigger and bigger and not looking and detracting from the beautiful cars and the rest of the building.
And I think we can work that out with Public Works, wherever that's located, again, we can make accommodations for the drainage to get the water down there, and even if we have to put in, you know, a longer trench grate type thing, so it's not sitting on the pavement, like you said, and discoloring the pavement, and then working its way, because when it works its way, it leaves that discolor trail all the way down. So we'll get some storm sewer there. We're picking up the storm, there's some ponding here from some, I think, older collapsed half-baked sewer that was put in at one time, so we're going to address that also. We've got new storm sewer going all the way back, we're coming down, we're around our property.
The baylot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So their lake back there will also go away, and then we'll, like I said, we've got storm sewer all around the property, so whatever we need to do to pick up that, the flushing, we'll do.
This is a very unique situation, as far as the piece of property, a well site, surrounded by business, very unique. I think this is a good use for this property that otherwise could not be developed for anything else, and will probably clean up a mosquito breeding area and, which would enhance, I think, public safety, too. No further questions.
I would echo most of my fellow commissioners' comments on this, and I applaud, and I like the way you do keep your lots. I would like to see myself that you, if possible, could pave as much of the well site, because to be quite frank, if this well site were owned by a private party, the village would have been on him tooth and nail. Village itself has not been a very good housekeeper of its own property. Quite disgusting, really. All right, since we have a zoning code variance request, may I have a reading of the findings of fact?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The property is landlocked and set back from Ogden Avenue and other public roadways. Due to space constraints at this dealership, the applicant requests this variance to allow more inventory storage so that it may yield a reasonable return on this property. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Given this location, the location of this landlocked parcel, the reduced setbacks will not adversely impact surrounding properties or cause aesthetic concerns. The site will be fully engineered to address all stormwater drainage concerns. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Given the location of this landlocked property and the heavily commercial nature of this Ogden Avenue corridor, these reduced setbacks will not adversely impact surrounding properties or alter the character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreements, and the readings of the finding of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 12024, item A, a zoning code variance request to reduce the required setbacks for a landlocked lot to approximately six foot in the B2 general business district.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Question on the motion, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, site and landscaping plan approval.
So moved.
Second.
I heard Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion?
I think it was Commissioner Thomas did the second.
Who's Mr. Thomas?
Second.
Well, it was tied between you and Wally, so.
Yeah, Wally came.
Second by Commissioner Thomas, I stand corrected. Question on the motion, roll call, please?
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and staff can tell you when you go before a committee of the whole for the village board level.
Okay, thank you very much, Helen.
Good luck to you, sir.
Thanks.
Staff, have anything?
One quick comment, as Commissioner Pill did mention, we had a comprehensive plan steering committee meeting this past Wednesday, so the plan is moving ahead. At that meeting, the goals, vision, and objectives were discussed, that was a portion of the document that came out of our January community workshop, which we had very good attendance at, and then also we looked at the four sub-area plans that had been identified, draft documents, including maps, visions, and goals for those areas. So it's anticipated that we should have a full draft document within about 60 days or so, and then we'll be setting up our fourth steering committee meeting. Once it gets all the way through committee, we would be bringing everything to this commission for discussion.
Thank you. John, anything?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Pill, when you talked about the comprehensive plan, by our recommending this infringement upon the front yard setback, is a comprehensive plan already addressing that, where we may have, we'd be negating some of the benefits of it, or?
I don't think it's defined yet in its entirety, but I think it's clear that they view the Ogden Avenue corridor as a very specific and valuable piece to the Westmont puzzle, and they want that be a, the enhancement and beautification of that area, as well as traffic flow, pedestrian safety, in other words, finishing sidewalks and things like that, but also allowing for some green space both between street and sidewalk and sidewalk and parking, to give it a little more elegant look and things like that. Now, I think this end of Ogden, that's primarily west of Cass where that's looked at. This portion of Ogden is fairly nice, and the car dealers have done a good job as a whole. I just wanted to point out that, you know, we're investing a lot of time and dollars in looking at this, and their recommendation's not going to come out for at least another 60 days, and it's going to bounce around for a while, it's probably a good nine months away before this thing is finalized. And I'm not sure that four or even six heads are going to be something that's going to detract and change a comprehensive plan, but I just wanted to get it out there for the record, because we had just spent several hours on Monday discussing this in committee, and most of us had spent several hours reviewing these recommendations and things like that. Again, to me, I'm surprised, because it's such a beautiful facility, it seems that this almost takes away from it, and the building up of it further hides the cars and buildings that showcasing these cars is meant to unhide. It's sort of ironic to me, but, you know, it's their business also.
I myself was, I was really torn between as to how to vote, because, as you say, their building is so beautiful to look at just the way it is, and obviously, they're, they are successful, they're making some money.
Well, they're one of the top dealers in the entire United States, so-
There again.
The five-foot, everybody should sink them four feet, then.
So that was a hard call on my part. Okay, any further comments by commissioners? Recommend a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.